Yes, sir, we're ready. Thanks, Sheriff. We have, is Mr. David Petty here, please?
I think you're going to be in the parking lot right now.
Okay.
If you want, I'll go ahead. I don't want to hold up the meeting.
If you can, please, Sheriff, let's go ahead.
Okay.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we praise you and we worship you. And we thank you that you have called out from the people of our county, people, with the ability to govern, with a sense of compassion, a sense of propriety, and a sense of being conservative with the people's money. We thank you for that, Father, and I pray the blessing, your blessing on this meeting, and say the blessing of our Lord on you all and all that is yours by blood, adoption, or assignment, in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Now, if we could, Commissioner Hollenworth, you'll lead us in the plea of allegiance, please. Ron, did Mr. Petty happen to make it in yet? Okay, well, we'll move on, but I thought a little extra we would need it. Anyway, we'll move on to roll call. Madam Clerk, when you're ready, we'll please take the roll. Is everybody, Mr. Hodge, is your... Can you mark him present? Mr. DeFord got hers. That's right. Well, I can clearly see you're present. Seventeen present. Thank you very much. With that, we will move on to approve the agenda. Before we do, I would like to put that we need to add an additional member to the BZA on this agenda, please. This is due to the fact that we have one associate member that has come off, termed out, and we have another that has been replaced due to turnover in the election last August. And so we need to add that the commission will appoint two members to the BZA, one associate, one regular, also in this agenda. And we need to pull Attachment 27, which is our investment policy, new language, and we need to rewrite that and bring it back in February will be the intent there. So we'll remove that. And do we have any additional changes to the agenda? Yes, sir. Mr. Morse. And that's Attachment eight, I believe. Attachment eight on nine F. Attachment eight. We have eight and nine. It's Attachment eight we need to pull. Does that sound correct, Commissioner? Okay, thank you. Any additional comments about the agenda? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda? Motion is second. Prepare to vote. Those in favor of approving agenda say vote aye. Those say no. Vote no. Motion is second. We're prepared to vote. Any discussion? Let's vote, please. Seventeen present. Seventeen present, thank you. Before we move into the minutes, I'd like to say, I meant to say this earlier, but we were getting taken off of everything else. This is our first meeting where we're actually broadcasting live on YouTube tonight. If you notice, we have new cameras left and right and in the rear, and it's, there's people tuning in now, obviously. It will be archived on the cloud on YouTube, and we also have a very large server here where we're beginning to hold those meetings. And this is our first time out of the gate. We're not getting rid of our manual minutes at all. This is just, we're going to be doing both of them at the same time as we play deeper into this. But we wanted to let you know that that part's up and running, and it's going to get easier and smoother. Okay. And make sure you use your mics when you talk, if you want to show up on the YouTube feed. Just make sure you get in it pretty good. Thank you, Sam, very much. Okay, now we're ready to approve, review and approve the minutes of the 11-8-22 meeting. We have a motion is second on the minutes. Motion properly second. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, prepare to vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes, vote aye. Those opposed, vote no. Seventeen, yes, thank you. Yes, public comments. I went right past that when I was starting my call. I was supposed to move right into public comments. We do like to use this time now. It'll take up to 20 minutes, at least 20 minutes, if somebody would like to speak. Up to 10 people, two minutes apiece. Yes, ma'am, if you'll stand up and identify yourself, you're welcome to speak, two minutes.
Hello, my name is Sally Singles. I've been a resident of District One for the past 22 and a half years. Many of you know I take my politics seriously and the people who are elected to represent me. I'm here to talk about candidate applicant Helen DeBellis. Several years ago, I asked Helen to run for County Commissioner because of her extensive work background and her involvement in the community. Helen would be here tonight, but when she lost the primary, she decided to plan a trip. When Mr. Jones passed away, it was too late to cancel the trip. Helen has been, has been in communication with several of us while away, still caring about her district and the people she so passionately represented for the last four years. Helen has lived in Coffee and Franklin Counties most of her adult life. She has owned and operated several successful businesses and still owns many properties, all of which are well taken care of. She was past president of the Manchester Chamber of Commerce, past member of Arnold Community Council, originating and past director of CASA. They are court-appointed special advocate voice for abused and neglected children in our communities. When, when did Helen, what did Helen do as a county commissioner? During her time, she chaired the Legislative Committee and was on the Capitol Outlay Committee. She always had a voice asking tough questions to gain more insight before voting on something. She was very vocal about not having the commission agendas or meeting notes from other committee meetings available to her and the other county commissioners in a timely fashion before the commission meetings. Mayor Matheny and his office are taking care of that now. Helen supports and applauds the recent changes he has made. Not so long ago, a Manchester City alderman who had lost another election felt it was unfair to him when a person who had not spent any money on a campaign or campaigned at all was appointed to a seat that was left vacant due to a death. He felt it should have been given that spot, he should have been given that spot, being the next largest vote getter. Helen was the third largest vote getter during the primary when Mr. Jones won. 157 people in that district voted to return Helen as their county commissioner. I was one of them. Benny Jones was my friend and has the sweetest family, but he knew how I felt about returning Helen DeBellis and Jimmy Hollenworth to that seat.
Ms. Singles, we need to...
Okay, I'll wrap it up.
Your two minutes, please.
If you died tomorrow, would you think it would be okay to replace you with someone from your family over the most recent commissioner, who was already qualified by completing the required 28 hours of continuing education? Who was effective as a county commissioner and who 157 people from their district voted to return them to their seat?
All right, ma'am, we need to...
Would you silence those 157 voters? I will respect whatever you decide.
Thank you. Do we have any additional public comments? Yes, ma'am, if you'll give your name and...
Okay, my name's Susan Parsley. I also live in District One. I was a big supporter of Benny Jones, helped campaign for him. Super good man. We worked on other campaigns for a young man that actually is a trauma surgeon at Vanderbilt, Dr. Manny Sethi, when he ran. We both helped with his campaign. He's been friends with my husband. They went to high school together. His family is like my family, and I hope that everyone will vote to put his family member in, because that's who deserves to get this. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have any additional comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is the number nine, or excuse me, number eight. It's the announcement of Coffee County's Governor Volunteer Star Award for 2022. And we have several people that want to come up. Mr. Wilkie, we have Mayor Nois, who's going to help present here from Telahoma. Mayor Howard is going to be here. She's a little bit under the weather tonight, but we were all three going to present. But I will come down now, and we'll let Lamar kick us off. We want to applaud Ms. Staria Davidson and Storehouse Food Pantry for being great community citizens, and I'll be right down.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. It's great to be here. For the three people who don't know who I am, I'm Lamar Wilkie. This is my, I do, I wear a lot of hats around here, but it's my favorite one. I'm the Coffee County Coordinator for the Governor's Volunteer Stars Award. It's a state-level program to recognize the top volunteers in the volunteer state, and it can only be awarded to one top volunteer in each county each year. And there's a separate one for young people who are doing great things in their community. And it's so rewarding and important to volunteer to give back to the community in which we live. And it is such a privilege to have County Mayor Matheny, Telahoma Mayor Nois, and we were really expecting and hoping for Manchester Mayor Howard, who's been looking for this since Thanksgiving, but I got a frantic call this morning that she just can't make it. So Staria Davidson, can you please join us?
Johnny, would you like to... Johnny's an alderman in Manchester.
I'm a volunteer. I'm on board.
Come on.
I'm on the board, volunteer to the state.
There you go.
Come on. Yeah.
It's Lamar. You're going to do a little fun while...
Come on. I'm on volunteer.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Staria. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd love to bat your ass. I'll get him.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. We had a lot of great applicants for that. It was not easy for the selection committee, I promise you. A lot of interest and a lot of great projects, so we appreciate everybody for participating. Now we'll move on to number nine, elections, appointments, and confirmations. The first is Section Eight, it's Commissioner One, District Vacancy. We have, of course, here's the posture we're in. Commissioner Benny Jones passed away end of last year, newly elected District One. There's two seats from District One. Commissioner Hollenworth serves one. Benny obviously left the second one vacant. So we're going to pick, this commission will vote tonight to fill that seat for, till the next term. The Register of Elections, and he's here if we need to speak with him, has advised me that this seat will run for normal election in the 2024 cycle, which means it will have a normal primary in May of 2024 and a normal general in August of 2024, regardless of what we do here tonight. So the intent is for this body to pick right now one of three people. I would like to open the floor for nominations in a moment, then we'll close the floor. Once nominations have ceased, then I would like to give each person maybe up to four minutes to address the commission. We can do it longer if you choose, if you have additional questions. And of course, then this body will be free to ask all the questions they need to and have any exchange they need to. And we're going to run it just like a normal motion, like we would, and if we get in a hurry about something, we'll just slow down, do it, and make sure we get it right. So the first thing we do is, I would like to entertain a motion to open the floor for nominations to fill District One seat. Commissioner Morse.
I nominate Helen DeBellis, the runner-up, who served for years faithfully and was very active in doing her due diligence on all the committees she was on.
Thank you. That's duly noted. Commissioner, former Commissioner Helen DeBellis has been nominated. Her citizen participation form is in your packet, and so you should be able to see that. Do we have additional nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Holly Jones for the appointment to District One.
Commissioner Watkins has nominated Holly Jones for District One. Her paperwork is also in your packet. There's also, just so you know, there are, there's a legal opinion from the Judge Advocate General for the General of Arnold Air Force Base stating that she is, can occupy the seat if appointed by this commission. And so that pack, that letter is also in your packet. And that's duly noted also, thank you. Do we have additional nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Dow Jones.
Madam Jones has been nominated also. So we now have three nominations. Mrs. Jones, Dow Jones paperwork is also in your file. She filled out a normal citizen participation form, and as far as I know, there are no attachments like there are to Mrs., the other Mrs. Jones. So we have three nominations. Do we have a motion to continue nominations or to cease nominations?
Motion to cease nominations.
Motion to cease.
Second.
We have a second. Those in favor of ceasing nominations, vote aye. We do a voice vote's fine. Chair detects, majority says votes aye, and nominations have ceased. Therefore, now we will, we'll go in order of nominations, if that's fair, and how individuals or their surrogates could speak for up to four minutes to this body. If that meets everybody's approval, we'll move forward. Helen DeBellis was the first nominee, therefore, the first four minutes are available for, she's not here tonight, but anybody would like to speak on her behalf before the next. Seeing none, we'll move to the second nominee for District One Commission seat, which is Ms. Holly Jones. Ms. Jones, you're welcome. If you'll, of course, tell this body who you are and where you live to confirm your address for the potential seat, and then you have up to four minutes, please.
Great, thank you. Hello, Mr. Mayor, Sheriff, Councilor North, and the Commissioners. I come to you before you tonight and ask for your support and your consideration in appointing me to my daddy, Benny Jones, the late Commissioner for District One, his seat. My father worked very hard to get this seat, and the constituents wanted his change, and they selected him. Now, my request does not come without experience or credentials. I am a lifelong resident of District One and Manchester. I've gone from 171 to 135 and over in Country Club area, so all in, pardon me, Battle Creek area, so all in District One. But I am a graduate of Montlo State Community College, Middle Tennessee State University, where I've received my bachelor's degree in organizational communication, my master's degree in higher education with an emphasis in administration and supervision. For the last 12, 13 years, time escapes me, I've been working for the Air Force. And for the last seven, I've been in the Information Protection Office and serving as the Information Security Program Manager for the last three. I have experience in managing and leading people, drafting and executing security plans and procedures, and educating the workforce in protecting our information so that we can be number one in protecting our assets. I ask you all to please consider me to do this job. I assure you that I will approach every situation with no bias. I will be prepared, and I will do my very best job. And I appreciate your time. I will be here for any questions that you all may have, and I thank you all for what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, very much. And we have one more nominee, Mrs. Dow Jones. Yes, ma'am. If you'll also give your name and your physical address to the committee, please.
I am Dow Jones. I reside at 171 Eden Avenue. Good evening, Sheriff Parton, Mayor Matheny, Honorable Council Commissioners and Council here. Happy New Year to each one of you, and Happy New Year to you, ladies and gentlemen. I'm glad you're here with us tonight, too, to see this process. It's important that we all take it seriously. I think it is a good night to appoint the replacement for my husband's seat in District One, the district where the voters of District One elected him. He won that primary in May, went on in August to receive 390 votes in August. That makes us proud, because we know what he was about. He loved this county. He was raised here, and he wanted to do good things and looked forward to working with each and every one of you. I am here representing his family, the Jones family, that takes up many of these seats out here, and we want to take up his cause. And either way, we intend to be a presence, to be looking forward to do good things for our county. We are here tonight to solicit your help in getting his replacement in that number one seat right there. We came forward to you in November, actually, it was November the 8th, when you all honored us and had us here and paid tribute to my husband during our time of desolation and devastation, and we appreciate that. I can't tell you how much we appreciate that. We tried to see each and every one of you that night, because we knew that there was precedence that said, in this occasion, that perhaps if you had a qualified member of that person's family, you all would consider naming that person to represent in that seat to which they were elected. Since that time, we became privy to some questions and concerns that you all might have, because we expressed to you that it was our desire that our daughter be appointed, appointed to that position. We knew you had concerns, because she, as she told you, is a federal employee, and there are legal ramifications to her appointment. Actually, there are no legal ramifications to her appointment. We have ran it through legal channels, and we have that legal determination for you. So she is full well willing, able, and legally responsible to fill that position. I filed my paperwork because of those concerns and because of our concern that the voters of District One wanted a Jones in that seat. So to preserve that right, I filed my paperwork, but it has always been our family's desire that our daughter be appointed to her daddy's seat and be able to serve in that capacity. She has all of the qualifications, the required skills, the leadership, the knowledge to serve in that capacity, and that's why I am here today, to make sure that you know there are no legal obstacles that would prevent her from doing so. It is the will of the voters of District One that a Jones be in that seat. And so I ask you wholeheartedly to please, please... I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. I wanted to make sure that I had everyone's attention, and I appreciate all of your attention in hearing what I have to say, because we take our responsibilities as citizens of Coffee County very seriously, and as I said, my husband looked forward to serving with you. Well, he still can, through my daughter being appointed to that position. And so I stand here before you and respectfully and prayerfully ask you to please appoint Holly Jones to the District One seat of Benny Jones. I thank you very much for your consideration.
Ms. Dow, I did nominate you. Would you like to withdraw your name from the nomination process right now?
Yes, Sir Commissioner Hunt, I would withdraw my name, because I throw all of my support to Holly Jones. Thank you for your nomination, sir. I appreciate all of your consideration.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your willingness to serve, and I think that will clean up the process.
Thank you, and it's duly noted that Dow Jones has withdrawn her nomination, and we now have two before us for District One, Helen DeBellis and Holly Jones. We've heard, we've, each candidate has been given an opportunity to speak. Would the commission like to ask either candidate any questions at this time? Seeing none, would any Commissioner like to make any comments or statements about the process as it's moved forward now? And knowing that after this, we'll be prepared to vote, we will cast a, we'll do roll call, voice vote. Excuse me. Takes 10 votes, yes, to nominate or to point. So do we have anybody? Commissioner Morse, go ahead.
The only thing I'd like to point out is, Holly, if you're still working for the Air Force, you can't run in 2024.
Is that a, is that a question on the address?
Go ahead.
Um...
Go ahead. Ms. Jones.
Great point, Mr. Morse. Unfortunately, I have learned far too soon in my life that life is what happens when you're busy making other plans, and you may not continue on the path that you thought you had set out. I would respectfully, I don't know where I'm going to be next year, next, even next month, but as far as the election in '24, I would respectfully like to cross that bridge when I come to it. But never say never.
Thank you. Once again, in the Register of Elections is here, whatever this commission does tonight, whoever is appointed this seat will have to run a normal primary cycle in May of 2024 and a... and a general in August of 2024. Any additional comments anybody would like to make? If not, we will move into the voting phase and remember, it takes 10 votes. And Madam Clerk, when you're ready, we'll call the roll. And if you'll just, excuse me, say your choice of the two candidates or whatever you choose to do.
Holly Jones.
Holly Jones.
Three years ago, there was two people, we had a vacancy for District Four, myself and someone else. We went through eight elections to get one of us elected and... Mr. Brown, we got a vote here. We already had an opportunity to sway.
Well, I didn't want to say it then, I wouldn't say it. But anyway. Loyalty is one of the biggest things we can have today. And Helen backed me eight times, nothing against the Jones family because I know them all and I respect them, went to school with Benny. But being loyal to somebody, I have to vote for Helen because she voted for me.
Thank you, Commissioner.
My vote's for Holly Jones.
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 Jones, come on down here, I swear again.
Your right hand, take that, please. I, Holly Jones, do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will perform fidelity.
I will perform fidelity.
The duties of the office to which I have been elected.
The duties of the office to which I have been elected.
And which I am about to assume.
And which I am about to assume.
I do solemnly swear to support the Constitution.
I solemnly swear to support the Constitution.
Of Tennessee and the United States.
Of Tennessee and the United States.
And to faithfully perform the duties of the office.
And to faithfully perform the duties of the office.
Of County Commissioner.
Of County Commissioner.
Representing the first district of Coffey County, Tennessee.
Representing the first district of Coffey County, Tennessee.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Oh, wait, may I address everyone really quickly? Thank you. Thank you all.
Congratulations. And Commissioner Jones, you are appointed to Budget and Finance and IT Committees, please. And we'll move on to Notaries, Attachment Four. Oh, Ms. Jones, you still need to speak, I'm sorry.
Please mash your button.
May I have to hit the button?
I just want to thank everyone for their support in this. This is truly monumental and I appreciate you all so very much. Thank you, truly thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much. And now we are on B, under number nine, for Notaries or Attachment Four. And need a, entertain a motion to accept our notaries. I have a motion for us properly seconded. We have any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote to accept our list of notaries dated January 10th, 2023. Eighteen yes votes, thank you. Next is, we have a opening in District Four, Seat Two, Road Commissioner. We only have one applicant for it and this commission has been prepared to nominate that individual. We would entertain additional nominations from the floor, other than Arliss Markham, if any have any at this time. Seeing none, do we have any discussion on the appointment of Mr. Markham? And is he here, sir?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Markham, if, sometimes less is more, but would you like to say anything?
No.
We'd be glad to have your help and we need your help. We appreciate you stepping forward. That's, it's been a tough slot for us to fill this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. And he did step forward willingly. We didn't, it wasn't unwilling, I'll put it that way. But anyway, we would like to vote now. We have a motion properly seconded to appoint Mr. Markham and let's vote on his appointment, Good point. He will also have to run in 2024, May primary and August general. All right. Eighteen yes votes, congratulations, Mr. Markham, and thank you. Next, we have a opening in Constable. And we had Mr. Randall Breaker came forward for that. The, Mr. Brian Coak from Telahoma, who previously held that constable position, moved out of the district, had to abdicate it. Mr. Breaker has stepped forward, willing to serve the remainder of that term. He will also fall under the same restrictions for primary and general in 2024. The floor can be opened for additional nominations or if this body chooses. And do we have any additional nominations? Mr. Breaker's packet is, or stuff is in your packet, a great guy. He's the general manager, by the way, of the Utility Commission. All water complaints go to him, not the County Mayor's Office. All right. Randall's good people. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, prepared to vote. Our motion's for us properly seconded. We're voting to appoint Mr. Randall Breaker for the unexpired term of Constable. Thank you, Mr. Breaker. Eighteen yes votes. Thank you very much and I'm sure the register will get with you. E is our next one, our committees, Attachment Seven. We've got numerous January appointments. These have been done in consultation with committee chairs and of course, the individuals seeking the appointments. And we can go about those however the body wishes. We can go by each committee or we can group them or do whatever. We can entertain a motion for. Commissioner Hunt.
I move to approve all committee appointments as presented in writing by the mayor. If anybody has issues with any of the committee appointments, this is the time you could separate the committees and amend the appointment by nominating your own individual. But historically, the mayor has always done a pretty good job staffing all of our committees. So I'm making a motion that we, in the interest of saving time, we approve all committee assignments that are mayorial appointments.
Thank you, Commissioner Hunt. Motion's for us properly seconded. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, prepared to vote on committee assignments for January 2023. All those in favor signify by voting aye. Seventeen, one abstention. Thank you very much. Next item is changes to our employee manual. As we said earlier, when we approved the agenda, Item Eight would be rolled hopefully till February timeframe of 2023. That leaves us number nine. Commissioner Morse, would you like to make any comments about Attachment Nine or? And we discussed date already and we'll visit that at a later date. We're moving to approve the change in number nine. Do we have, we have a motion for us properly seconded. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, prepared to vote. All in favor, signify by voting aye. Thank you. Eighteen positives. Now, our next item up is the Trustee Investment Authorization Language, which we once again discussed early on when we approved the agenda. We're going to have to change that for a rewrite, so it's going to need some mandatory language. We'll bring that back hopefully once again in February, once we get the mandatory language. But that took care of G. Now we have, Item H is also what we discussed early on and we made a change to the agenda in that we are going to appoint two members to the Board of Zoning Appeals. One is associate member and the other fills a vacancy brought about by the natural termination of one during the election in August of 2022. Board of Zoning Appeals, as most of you know, is a board that only the commission has purview over, the mayor has nothing to do with it, so I've not made any recommendations, I've not spoken to anyone, other than agreed to facilitate the vote amongst this body to make those two appointments. That being said, Commissioner Hunt, you're recognized.
Have you opened the floor for nominations?
Not yet, no, sir. I'm, Commissioner Morse, did you need to speak before?
I would be honored.
Okay. Okay, that's what, that's next, is to open the floor for nominations, so I will do that now. Commissioner Hunt.
You guys know how I like to explain stuff. The Board of Zoning Appeals by Tennessee Code is required to have one member from the Planning Commission, one member that is a commissioner. The other three are sort of at large. We lost a commissioner. I'd like to nominate Tim Morris as our commissioner, representing the commission on the Board of Zoning Appeals. He has an extensive background in planning. He served as Secretary of our Planning Commission and he can hit the ground running. The Board of Zoning Appeals, for those interested, any decision the Board of Zoning Appeals makes can only be reversed by a court of law. Whatever we decide, when those five members decide something, you have zero recourse within this county. You have to go before a court standing and that's why I feel like this position is so important. So my nomination is Tim Morris for the full commissioner position.
Thank you. And he nods that he will accept it and he does bring a lot of experience. Commissioner Morse.
I'd like to nominate Helen DeBellas. She's an extensive construction and real estate background and the experience on the commission, I think she'd be a good fit on this group.
I would concur. So we have two nominations before us. One is for Commissioner Tim Morris, the other is for former Commissioner Helen DeBellas. Do we have any additional nominations? Seeing none, do we have any discussion?
I've got one more.
Can you clarify whether we're voting for two spots?
Okay, so... Yes, sir. One is an associate member.
So these are not competing nominations?
Correct. Helen DeBellas has been nominated for the associate member position and Commissioner Tim Morris has been nominated for the standing commissioner position on the BZA. Yes.
One more explanation. The, this, the only, this is the only board that the mayor does not choose. It is by Tennessee Code, the full legislative body appoints the members to the Board of Zoning Appeals. In case it's felt different to you guys, that's why.
Thank you, Commissioner Hunt. And that was our, any additional discussions? Seeing none, prepare to vote on the two nominations. Do by affirmation or you can be, let's vote. Seventeen yeses for the slate and congratulations to Helen DeBellas and Commissioner Morse on those positions. Thank you very much. And Commissioner Morse also got put on beer board tonight. Busy night. If you didn't read enough, you probably got some more of them. All right, now we're going to move on to unfinished business, Employee Appreciation Payment Budget Amendments. These were amendments that were approved at the 12-8-22 Commission Meetings. The pages of the amendments were inadvertently left out of the agenda handouts, so were not included in the minutes of 12-8-22. A vote of approval today is required to include them in the minutes simply. And that is, it doesn't change what we did, other than make sure it's preserved in history. Just make sure that everything is properly preserved in the minutes. That's all voting on the affirmative will do for this motion. And we have a motion before us, it's properly seconded. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, we're prepared to vote. Eighteen yes, thank you. Motion carries. Next, I wanted to brief you before we move into any new business, wanted to talk about the Health Department very quickly and do a briefing. Commissioner Hunt has been running tandem with us on every single negotiations and others of you on some of them. And I've tried to keep you posted on the macro things that are going on. But we have been okayed by the state to go ahead and begin the process of engaging an architect. Capital Outlay is going to have a meeting, a special call meeting on Thursday to begin the process of interviewing architects from different parts of the state with different levels of experience in the field that we're looking for them for. Some of them have actually already built some health departments. We're one of 16 counties in the state that's getting a new health department. All 95 are getting some type of upgrades. The average award for those upgrades is half a million. We're getting about two and a half million from the state. As you know, we spent quite a bit of ARPA money to help match some of that money. And then the county's budgeted about an additional $860,000 to go towards that. We have approved the contract with TDOT for 400 and about 70,000 for the portion of the parking lot for the Telahoma Department. We're about ready to be able to bring forward the old Manchester Health Department, forward to proper committees to begin hopefully looking at disposal of that, as well as maybe some other real property that we are talking about in the future. And everything looks pretty good for us to be able to hit our economic targets, hit our square footage targets in the lot we're in. I feel pretty good about the cadence of everything, better than I did earlier. I know by July of 2026, we have to have it done all the way. And we hope to be able to let it out for bid, maybe by the end of this year. Commissioner Hunt, do you have any additional? Besides that, thank you. Okay, thank you. So that's where that is and it's an exciting project and we're all looking forward to using various skill sets that we have here to not pay any stupid tax on building this building. And make sure we do it right the first time and build a quality building that we hope some way aesthetically represents Coffey County, too. And we're trying to figure... And we're trying to figure out what that might be. Now we'll move on to new business and that is resolution 2023-1 to apply for a food insecurity grant. This is a community development block grant. The war amount is up to 500,000. We had a public meeting last week for various nonprofits that wanted to apply for the food insecurity grant. The county itself in conjunction with South Central Tennessee Development District is going to apply for the grant. The county will then turn around and award the, as a sub grant to the individual participants. There's still time if there's a 501(c)(3) that is involved in the distribution of food, food services or the security of those food services and their 501(c)(3), and this is for equipment only, like trailers and coolers, that type of thing. It's not for salaries or operational budgets, it's for physical equipment. But we still have some applications available for that and the deadline is January 31st, so we're going to obviously have it done before that and have it in. So this language is required along with the grant to show that we are indeed in support of this and trying as best as we can to reach out in the community as deeply as we can toward this grant. We have had ads in the paper. We've spoken with both cities, both mayors and managers, so they've known for quite some time. And that being said, I'd like to move adopt for that resolution. Motion force properly seconded. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, vote on the resolution, please. Eighteen yes, thank you. Final item under new business is to approve the fiscal year 2024 budget calendar. It's attachment 14. We have motion for us, properly seconded. Do we have any discussion? This will be an interesting budget year. I look forward to working with the finance committee, working with the various department heads. Obviously, we're still very early on into the old fiscal year, but we're already starting to begin to think about some budgeting issues. So I look forward to it, but this simply approves the calendar that we have to statutorily go by. So that being said, without any further discussion, we're prepared to vote. All those in favor, signify by voting aye. Resolution carries eighteen yes, thank you. Item number 12 is reports from committees. And as in the past, we'll go down, we'll go down through the list. Committee chairs can even, can either say, you know, you're free to say your minute, everybody's minutes are in their packet. Everybody's minutes are online, so you can just make reference to your minutes if you're satisfied with them to say that they're fine or you may repeat them. You can repeat parts of them, paraphrase them, but this is an opportunity if you'd like to update us on various committee assignments, you're free to do so. And we will begin with A, budget and finance. Mr. Seaborn.
Thank you, Mayor. Just, I'm not going to read the whole minutes. I'm going to read one item out of the minutes. Our last meeting was December 1st and at that meeting, we had a visitor, Ms. Lauren Lowe, who is our county financial advisor from PRM Financial Advisors, who gave us a report on our credit status for our general fund. And so you'll find that report in your packet, the commissioners can, but just for the public's sake, summary of her report, as of June 30th, 2022, the county had 60 million 460,799 dollars of outstanding general obligation debt. Our rate, our debt is rated by S&amp;P Global and our current credit rating is AA minus, which is considered very good for a county our size. The report provides an overview listing of the county's outstanding debt bonds. And then of interest, the report also lists positive and negative factors which influence the county's debt rating. A couple of those negatives, we think we have a chance to turn around possibly and maybe improve the positives. And so if we can do that, then we can jump our credit rating up a little bit and that mayens cheaper loans for us. So I encourage you to take a look at that. Our next meeting will be the third or the fourth Thursday of this month at 5:00 PM.
Thank you. Chairman, health, welfare, recreation, Mr. Hollinsworth?
Yes, I'm not going to read out the minutes. They're in your packet, but we've been really busy with rural water, rural fire and the work on our animal shelter. I'd like to, everyone come out, please, and join in, get your input. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, January 24th at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. Law enforcement, Commissioner?
Our next meeting is Thursday, March the 9th at 4:30.
Thank you. Beer board? Mr. Hunt, you want to speak on behalf of the beer board?
We didn't have anything.
No action, that's correct. Capital Outlay now, sir.
Yeah, I've got a lot there, but I'll keep it short. At our last meeting, which was Thursday of last week, the topic of discussion was regarding our former workhouse, which is next to the justice center. Everybody remembers his old high school. That's the building we're talking about. Alan Linley and Emergency Management Agency, he's our director over there, is, he's wanting to, he's got a lot of equipment sitting out in the weather. So there's like three or four different ways we could handle this. We could open up the, what I call the bedroom is where all our trustees slept. We can knock a hole in the wall, make that actual garage for him to put all this. He's got like, he tallied it up like 175,000 dollars worth of rolling equipment that's sitting in the weather. It needs to be protected, so we're going to be addressing that. And the other thing is, I mean, guys, as taxpayers, you're going to have to look at something that's going to come down the road sooner if not later is a new justice center. As I said, the key word, high school, you know, that high school was built in what, 50s or something, you know, and we renovated it and it's served well. It worked good until our sheriff's department got to doing such a good job and we're filling up the jails and we're having a lot more court action than what we used to. So that's something that's going to come down the pipe and I just hope, I just hope that everybody keeps building new houses and the tax dollars keep rolling in where we can afford to do that without any tax increase. Is Rick Susie in the room at all? Rick Susie is our maintenance director. He's, he's a guy that runs around here like a little rooster, taking care of every problem that pops up with our buildings and he does a really good job of it, as the mayor and our chief of staff can attest to. We had, at the other end of this building just this week, unrelated to single-digit temperatures, there was three fire sprinkler heads just popped off spontaneously and dumped a whole bunch of water. And was that John's office or the register of deeds? Where was that? Oh, the election. Thank you, Andy. But anyway, there was not a whole lot of damage according to Rick. And if you see Rick thanking for the LED lights, when you guys exit the building today, notice you can see where you're walking. The LED lights under both entrance, at the other end, this end are now LED lighting and now we can see what we're doing when we leave the building. Also, we are, this has been a pet peeve of mine for a couple of years. We need that big mound of grass that's right in front of the door. We discussed that. We're going to put sidewalks, a V-shaped sidewalk on either side of those signs you see. Every day that I'm here, I see somebody walking up and across that grass mound, so we're going to work on that. And so ingress, egress to the building is a straight line, not a circular pattern. Other than that, that's all I had on Capital. Oh, oh, one, one more, sorry. We are in the process of selecting the architectural and design firm for our new health department building. As the mayor stated earlier, that's a special call meeting this Thursday, 4:00 PM in this building where we have invited, we've, right now, we've got four invite, four invitations out to firms that are going to come and hawk their wares and try to convince us they're the best company to do the design and hopefully we get something going real quick on this health department. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Policies and procedures. Would anybody like to speak on that?
I'll speak to.
Go ahead, Ms. Hirschman.
As you can see, we've been busy working on policy and procedures and we brought a couple of items to the package tonight, but I know that one of them was already returned. We have our next meeting on the 23rd at 5 o'clock and we didn't appreciate if anybody would like to join us to come and see what we're doing because we are trying to straighten up some issues that's in the manuals and stuff. So be looking for some more issues coming down the line. I will tell you that we are reviewing our training program guidelines and that is going to be getting into some budgeting of your departments, so be prepared. You won't like it, but it's going to be where, it's going to be as fair as we can make it because we would like to see people that are being trained on our dime to be able to be paid for it instead of having to pay for it out of their own pocket. So be looking for that, but that's about where we're at right now and our agenda is in your, on post it, so.
Thank you very much. And that's tedious work at times, but it's some of the most important too. Okay, industrial board. I'll just speak, great relationship with Steven Crook and his bunch over there. They continue to do the due diligence on the larger mega site that we have here and engage in state Tennessee and landowners and consistent talks and I continue to be encouraged by some of the signals I've heard and also the work they do in industrial parking with the recruitment. So I appreciate them and the relationship we have with them. Strategic planning. Commissioner Seaborn?
Thank you, Mayor. Just in your packet, you'll see minutes from the November 17th meeting and we also had a meeting in December that was more internal discussion, but we've been having stakeholder meetings and so in November, we met with Mr. Ryan French with South Central Tennessee Tourism Association. And so just a couple of quick statistics that the audience may find interesting. Tourism, as you probably won't be surprised, is the second largest industry in the state of Tennessee. Coffee County is ranked 19th out of 95 counties in Tennessee for tourism revenue and direct visitor spending in Coffee County is 122 million dollars in 2021. So Brian broke that up, says a result of taxes generated by tourist activity in Coffee County, each household pays 420 dollars less in state and local taxes. And so tourism is important. We had a lot of good discussions with Ryan on things we could do to improve tourism and so we'll be bringing some of those recommendations forth, I'm sure, in our strategic plan when we get it done. Our goal is to try to have, you know, somewhat of a final document on that towards summer. Our next meeting will be this Thursday and we're supposed to be meeting with Mayor Howard, so I'm interested to find out that she was feeling under the weather tonight. So I guess I'll have to check and see if we're still having her, but 5:30 this Thursday if you're interested in that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone here, planning committee, like to talk about anything going on in the planning committee? You can find their agendas online and minutes also are included. Ambulance authority, Mr. Doublefield?
Yes, I wasn't at the last, I'm at the starting meeting because I was having a knee replaced, but you can refer to your minutes or if Missy wants to elaborate on one of that meeting, you can. Missy, we make the third Thursday of every month if you want to attend a meeting. If you've got anything you want to say about that.
It was a very short meeting that's all in the minutes.
Okay.
Thank you. Exit 105 joint committee has not met recently. When they do, we'll of course put notice out properly and minutes will reflect a meeting, but they've not met since last meeting we've had. Investment committee, I'll quickly give a, I'm on it obviously. The main thing we've done is we met to bring forward the resolution for the language tonight, which we obviously had to move again to February. So the minutes reflect the machinations of that language and getting it here tonight. So we'll approve that language this month and move it forward in February. Sanitation board, Mr. Nettles or Commissioner Hunt?
Yeah, I chair the sanitation board. The only thing I gotta say, guys, I'd have to, for anybody that was inconvenienced due to that single-digit winter weather we had, we apologize. We had to close the centers one day. It was, there's a lot of mechanics and hydraulics that operate the compactors at those places. Single-digit temperatures are not conducive to good maintenance and machinery function. We also have the people that work there, when you go in to throw those garbage bags in and bins, just at least smile at them. You know, it's a hard job. It's a thankless job and we don't pay a whole lot of money for those people that do that. And a lot of them are like me in their golden years and we just felt like asking them to work when it's seven degrees or six degrees. We just felt like it was the prudent thing to do to close those convenience centers for one day, as far as I know. And our county does a pretty good job of having those convenience centers open regularly and on weekends, some counties don't do that. So that's all I have to say from the sanitation board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have legislative committee.
We had a meeting, the minutes are there. And I'd like to say another thing. I think all of us appreciate getting the minutes from all the committees. That's a very welcome change so we can see what's going on. Legislative kind of does due diligence on items before they come to the floor and we appreciate the county attorney being in the last meeting. We plan to meet about a week to 10 days before each legislative session so we can review anything the mayor sends to us to make sure that there aren't some side effects that haven't been considered before it comes to the floor.
Thank you. County road reports, anybody like to comment on those? Seeing none, they're included attachment 28.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, I couldn't push the button fast enough.
Go ahead.
On that report, it looks like that the district identification is for the old districting. It doesn't look like it's for the new districting. Is that, am I seeing that correctly?
We'll have to update it. We will.
Yeah, I'd like an updated report, so.
We will.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, on Kendall Cemetery Road, Kendall is spelled incorrectly. It's, I was made aware of that this evening. It's K-E-N-D-E-L-L.
So we need to note that spelling needs to be corrected, obviously. And we'll, can you say that one more time, Mark?
Yes, sir. Kendall Road, it's on page 13. It's in front of the attachment 28. It's K-E-N-D-E-L-L, not A-L-L.
Okay. Do we note it? Thank you. IT committee, would anybody like to speak on behalf of IT? I'll say that we'll be working with Cindy Reagan and some others in the future and working on some strategery for IT and we'll work with sheriff's office and EMA and work on some options and our good partner, Ben Lowman, we appreciate them. They've done a great job for us. They really went above and beyond the call of duty too to help us get these cameras up and get the systems running, so we sure appreciate that and tech support they give us. Now we're ready to move, completes our reports from committees, we're ready to move to statements and announcements. Commissioner Brown?
This is a question for Dennis. Have you got a cost on the sidewalk and has it been approved?
Actually, that sidewalk construction is going to be taken care of in-house within the maintenance budget.
Okay. Because Holly and myself has worked on that to save the county some money if they're interested. Another statement, I talked to a lot of the county employees about the bonus and they don't have a chance to get up here. I guess they couldn't be here, but some can and they want to personally thank, or for me to tell the commission, thanks for their support on the bonus. And then I want to finish up my statement while I go. Myself and Holly's had a discussion and loyalty is one of our most important traits of person.